Everyone, thank you so much for joining us on time. We're gonna go ahead and get started. And we will now be offering Spanish interpretation in the room with Spanish. So hi, everyone. My name is Josephine Ayon Koya, and I work as the Equity and Inclusion Officer for the City of Hayward. I want to welcome you to the first of five Town Hall meetings that will focus on finalizing proposals for the Russell City Reparative Justice Project. In a few minutes, I'll give some background information about the project, but first just wanted to ground you all on some logistics for our time together today. Okay, so can I have our staff team, can we confirm that you can see my screen? Yes, okay, I see some nods. So today's conversation is going to be focused on two proposal topics. The first being general basic income, the second being fair compensation. So we'll start by giving some general background information about the project for those who are unfamiliar. I know many community members have been engaged for now about two years with giving input. And they know some of this history, but for the sake of having the same information, we want to ground in that. We'll do an introduction of our team. We'll also ask you to introduce yourselves. I do want to note that we are having a raffle at the end of the Town Hall. But in order to do so, we will need your name. So the name that appears on your Zoom will be what is entered into the raffle. And the email address that you entered when you came in will also be used to contact you. So if you have any issues or need to update your information, please let us know after the introduction poll. So we'll get a sense of who's in the room. Right now, we have, it looks like, I think last counted about 50 people participating in the staff team that you'll meet in a moment. We'll talk about the proposals of focus today, so specifically focusing on what we've heard to date. It's important to emphasize that nothing has been approved yet by City Council. And the final recommendation that goes for a determination really depends on community input. So while there may be industry terms for different ideas or concepts, this meeting and the series of Town Halls to follow, as well as the public comment process, will be what informs what goes to council as a top priority for consideration. So the things we'll talk about today, I'll go over in a moment in more detail, but primarily it will be who are we talking about when we mention these recommendations? To the extent that you want to share, you might share ideas about how the city might verify that people are eligible. And then most of the time, we'll focus on describing what is the actual proposed action or service or benefit. Towards the end of the meeting, I'll give some reminders around a public comment with some instructions on how you can finalize your input. And then we'll close out with next steps and a raffle. So before we introduce our staff, I do want to ground in some community agreements. This is a public meeting to inform the Russell City Reparative Justice Project. And as with all public meetings and spaces convened by the city, it's very important that we keep our spaces safe. That also means being brave and challenging ourselves to be creative and imaginative. But it includes things like a zero tolerance for any kind of disrespect, racism, hate, or harm. So just putting that out there as the first agreement that there is any of that behavior. City staff do reserve the right to remove folks from the meeting. It's very important that we are respectful in the feedback being received and respect the spirit of the work that we're trying to do here. The second thing we have is really understanding the emotional labor being acts of the community. That's especially for us as staff, but also for community members amongst each other. As city staff, we understand this has been a long process, and we're talking about historical harm that has for many passed on through generations. So that comes with an emotional labor. We also understand that for some families, these have been conversations decades in the making. So we really want to be compassionate with one another and with the space. We ask that you practice stepping up, stepping back, so trying to speak up when you can or stepping back if you feel you've been heard a lot. We really rely on your participation. When I go over the request for community input, I'll give a bit more of a framework about how we're analyzing data. But essentially, we're reporting out what we hear. So if we don't hear you, we cannot represent what you're saying. And that said, there will be a lot of different ideas, and our goal is to prioritize amongst the many opinions of the community. We ask that you have compassion and respect for one another. We are recording the meeting. You should have received a notice as you entered. The meeting will be posted online. It'll also be analyzed for us to understand how many times different themes or recommendations or concerns were risen in the meeting. So by being a part of the meeting, you do consent to being recorded. We will have the video on YouTube in our website. And then the comments from the chat, from the polls, and from what you say will be sorted and analyzed for public review. And primarily for the council as well to understand what the priorities are of the community. And then finally, if you have any questions or concerns, we do have a project email. It's russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. I'll ask if maybe one of our staff members can put that in the chat, so feel free to email that at any point if you have technical issues. We do request that if possible, you use the Zoom chat. Okay, so I will pause so you all can see those agreements. If you have any other agreements that you would like to add, feel free to add them in the chat. I see in the chat, we have some questions that are being resolved around Q and A and around how to select the channel. So again, you can select your language channel throughout the event. We have about maybe 15 or 20 more minutes before we get to some of the community public comment portion. So as long as you select your language prior to that, we should be able to hear you when you speak. Okay. So if we can all agree to these community agreements, I'll move on. So I'll briefly share some logistics, and then I'll pass it over to the amazing team of staff who've been working really hard to ensure that you all feel heard in this meeting. First, this has been communicated, but if you're sharing a device with anyone, we do recommend that you have only one person to a device. Even if you prefer being in the room, if you can be on another phone, that will help with things like your polling. So there will be polls where you can give input. Only one device can submit a poll per question. So if you have two or three people, you'll benefit from a second device or third device. We also will use a login information for the raffle, which will happen at the end of the meeting. We ask that you raise your hands to speak during public comment. That will be a feature that's turned on. You can also utilize the chat and the Q and A features throughout the meeting. And then feel free to let us know if you have any questions throughout the event. We'll try to publish any questions that are helpful and critical for the good of the group. And if there are big themes or questions that come up or that require more information and research, we'll have the follow-up on our website and post-event communications. So now I'm going to stop sharing screen and just give the mic to some of our staff team so you know who is in the room. Again, I just want to really express my gratitude to this team. They've worked really hard and are committed to making sure that we are very thorough in understanding what you want to prioritize to go before council and also that we can turn it all around. So I'm going to start by introducing Regina Youngblood, who many of you may know. As she was leading this project, I believe since its very early inception, so I'll turn it over to Regina.
Good evening, Russell City and all other interested parties. Thank you for joining us here this evening. Very happy that we've gotten to this stage of the process where you will be giving your voice to articulate what comes before council, how it comes before council for a final vote. So proud of the work that has been done up to this point and very excited to listen to what you have to say in the meeting tonight and in the meetings going forward.
Thank you, Regina. We'll next pass it over to Tim.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Loons. I'm a system analyst here in IT and I'm helping support this Zoom event tonight. So we can hear all the feedback and all the ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We have Melissa and then Michael.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Berkeley, Management Analyst with the Library Services Department for the City of Hayward. Thank you for attending, and we look forward to hearing all of your feedback.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Woolley, Management Analyst for Public Works. Thank you so much for joining, and we anticipate all of your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, some of the feedback we heard from our community members leading into this phase of the work was that we really wanted to expand linguistic access. So we have Luisa here who can introduce herself and tell you about what she will be doing.
I said. Good evening, everyone. My name is Luisa Carrera, and I will be your Spanish language interpreter for this meeting and all following meetings. I will be in the Spanish channel.
Thank you, Luisa, and thank you, everyone. So our team will be available. We want to make sure you know who's in the room with you, and we'll give you a chance to introduce yourselves as well. So I will bring my slides back up before we go into some more information. So just as a reminder, again, there will be opportunities to speak. We do want to hear from you. For the public input, we'll be framing it where there is time for a silent poll before each major block of discussion. So one will be about 30 to 40 minutes, the other will be about an hour. And you'll have an opportunity to speak then, so we do welcome you to think through your thoughts. If you receive an email today that has some details on the prompts that you'll see later on in the meeting, and it can help you think about some of the feedback we'll be collecting throughout today's Town Hall. If you are on the phone, I think we have at least one person who called in. If there's any way to use a device, we recommend that. So you have access to the polling features. If however, you're not able to use another device, you can also raise your hand and speak. When we open public comment, you'll need to press star six to unmute, and then you'll also need to press star nine to raise your hand. And we can put that in the chat for you. We'll have two breaks today. We know we are asking for three hours of your time during the dinner hour and after work. So we again, really appreciate you for being here. The full duration of time was really to make sure we have time to hear from you. So if we finish early, it's possible that we may end early, but we are planning to have two breaks. So you all have a chance to fully participate. Like I mentioned, your feedback is going to be analyzed, identified priorities. And that includes all feedbacks of whether it was something spoken. We will have a transcription of the event today. Things in the chat and the polls, we will also have that data pulled. And then following the event, there will be an opportunity to give written feedback during a 16-day public comment period. So every single proposal that goes through one of these Town Hall processes will also have a corresponding public comment process before the city finalizes what we heard and share proposals with council. Okay, so now I'm going to transition into talking a bit about the project background for those who may be unfamiliar. And then following, we will open it up to our first poll to really, or actually, let me just pause. I would love to know who's in the room. So why don't we just go a little bit out of order to get a sense of who's in the room? And I can background or go back to some of the information on what our goals are and what the road to getting here has been. So our goals with this meeting, like I mentioned, is to really try to understand, you know, who are we talking about? What are we talking about and why? And how do you see that happen? So you'll see that we'll have opportunities to talk about the who at the beginning and at the end. That is intentional. So we ask that you consider that and your feedback. But first, we would like to know who you are. So we have about 69 participants on the line. We are going to launch a poll. This poll has two questions, so we'll give you a couple of minutes to fill it out. The first question will be what, which group best identifies you or best represents you? So you can select more than one group, whether you're a former resident of Russell City, a descendant of a former resident of Russell City, city staff, or elected appointed officials or other community stakeholders. We invite you to take our survey now. So I will stop sharing for a moment and give you all a minute to complete the poll. We have about 28 responses, so almost half the room will give people a few more minutes to share who they are. Oh, I see about 80% of folks have responded. We'll take about 30 more seconds before closing the poll. Again, we just want to share and see who is in the room with this group. Okay, great. I think we have about, let's see, about 51 responses, so we can close the poll and see who we have with us today. So as you all should be able to see now, we have the survey responses. So it looks like the biggest group we have here includes former residents of Russell, or sorry, descendants of former residents of Russell City. So about 23 descendants. We have 13 former residents of Russell City, so about a quarter of the group currently here. We have 15 additional City of Hayward residents, and then seven people in the other category. In addition to that, we have our group of city staff. And it looks like everyone who completed the poll joined solo, so that is great. You all got the message. It looks like we are all on our own device, so that will be helpful as you do the polls. Thank you. Okay, so now I just present some background information. And feel free, again, if you have questions about some of this background, about the origin of the projects, let us know in the chat. We're happy to answer that. Otherwise, we'll get through this background information so we can start to have the community input, which is what we are all here for. Give me just a moment to share my screen. So thank you all for participating in that poll. We will continue to get your feedback. And we also hope that's helpful for knowing who's in the room with you. So just kind of give me some background to our, sorry, one second. Our goals, I'll go back to in a second, just for some background of the project. So back in November of 2022, the Hayward City Council voted unanimously to approve a resolution to apologize to Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and other people of color impacted by systemic racism. And as a follow-up to that apology, in January of 2022, during a strategic roadmap session, which is where the city both appointed officials and city leadership set priorities for the year, the council directed staff to work with survivors and descendants of Russell City, regardless of race, to determine what appropriate restitution looks like. And it was really important that we had a community-led process. So there was a steering committee developed with about a total of 15 people, different members and two alternates. There were many meetings and input sessions to get to last March, which was when there was a work session with city council. And in March, the work session was to review a set of draft recommendations. So there was a list of 26 that was developed with support from a consultant. And there also were several addendums from various steering committee members, and I think about 70 members of the public attended that meeting. At the March meeting, that was our most recent public meeting at City Council, the direction was to really narrow down some of the recommendations. While the nuance of the different recommendations is important, some found the recommendations to be a bit overlapping. So that's why we're getting down to 10 proposals. Additionally, there was a call to expand community input. So a lot of really great work came out of the steering committee, and I see many members of that committee on the call. We also want to be able to expand the voices being heard and defining what these recommendations are. So whether committee, former committee members or current community members, whomever, everyone can share their input. And it's really important that when we go back to council and submit proposals as a final recommendations from the community, that we can account, account for how many folks are really being heard. And then also, council specifically asks for scalable options. So when I say scalable, really that just means something that can be done in different pieces. That might mean more people are included in some versions or less in others. That might mean a recommendation goes for a longer period of time or a shorter period of time. But it just gives some flexibility for council to determine what level of resources is possible for what's being recommended. So for our meeting goals, sorry, give me one second. Just like I mentioned, so as a result, we narrowed down the work to a total of 10 topics. I will, in all these Town Halls, be showing you a summary of what we heard from the list of 26 draft recommendations and also what we heard from steering committee members to get to the point of the 10 recommendations. And just keeping in mind, each of these Town Halls will have two proposals of focus. So today, when we get to public comment, we welcome your feedback on both general basic income and fair compensation, which I'll talk about in a moment. Implementations will be, sorry, implementation proposals will be developed based on what you have said. So this work has not started from staff. While we do have all the feedback to date, that's something that's been analyzed and looked over in a lot of detail. We also understand the requests and recommendations from communities to provide further clarity about what gets prioritized for council consideration. So this meeting is really the start of that. Following, there will be a 16-day public comment process, and I'll share more information about that towards the end of our meeting. But the short story is, for these proposals, we will be really trying to deliver a final phase of this project where we are very clear about the ways in which community has voice priority and also the details of what community actually wants to see developed. So the way we'll do that is basically with what's called a qualitative data analysis. That basically involves looking at what did you say, whether it be what you said when you spoke, when you wrote it down, when you did a survey afterwards, and trying to sort the major themes. And I'll show a final version of the proposal template. But the idea with the themes is that we can prioritize your feedback on who are we talking about? We can prioritize all the feedback we got on how do we do this or what are we actually doing? And I think there's a question in the chat. So as far as what prompted the City of Hayward to do, to suggest reparations work or reparations that again, started with an apology that City Council unanimously approved about three years ago. So there was a commitment and a request from our city leadership to take this on, and that's some of the origin story. Okay, so now, like I mentioned, I'll summarize this before we get into some feedback. Our goal is really to collect community input. Today, we are discussing two proposals. So like I mentioned, we'll start with the who to get you all thinking about. Because because many, for those who are new to the conversation, many community members have been a part of these conversations for almost two years. People have raised preliminary ideas about who should be eligible or what should be done. And there's a lot of desire to really clarify what we mean. So we do want to start by getting you thinking who potential benefits could be for or who they should be proposed for before going into the what and the why. So we'll talk about how do you want to describe it? How would you justify what's being recommended in your own words? The how is very much connected to that, so that's more, you know, more task-oriented details about how we make it happen. And then at the very end of the meeting, we will have a ranking survey on the proposed eligibility criteria. So what we'll do is have some initial conversation to get your thoughts about who you're thinking about. We'll share back at some point in the meeting what we're hearing in the conversation. And then when all the public comment is finished and when we're almost done with the meeting, we'll actually have a ranking where you will first say a primary group that should be eligible, and if you believe in secondary groups, identifying those as well. So this slide just shows an example of what the proposal looks like. You also should have received an email with a link to where you can see this in more detail. These questions will be shared throughout the conversation tonight. But essentially, this is breaks down what I was mentioning. So starting from the top, when we think about how we're describing or justifying a benefit, that could be a description of an action, of a project, of a service type. It probably won't be very long, but we're generally trying to understand and communicate a recommendation and clarify some details, like how long will it be and why do we think it's helpful? And are there any models we're basing it off of? There'll also be a section for the objectives, so that will basically be down, be breaking down what needs to happen in order to implement what's being recommended. So we don't expect community to completely project plan every single action. We also know that staff can only do so much before we get council approval to confirm what the focus is. And then finally, the who will be who is eligible for the proposed benefits. So that could be really having the question, is this something that's open to everyone or is it a defined group for a specific harm? If there are multiple groups, who those should be, and then also some kind of prioritization if there are multiple groups. So that will be the bulk of our conversation. So again, you will have a chance to share your feedback there. So now just going on to summarize the first proposal topic, we're talking about general basic income. So on the left, you'll see the wording that was proposed back in March. So it says compensation and support for former, Russell City former residents. And then further details, general basic income for living former residents of Russell City. On the right, there are some additional comments that came from our steering committee, which basically speaks to financial damages and harm caused by living in Russell City. Also imminent domain, land grabs, and then long-term effects. So speaking to the fact that income and economic stability was disrupted, not just by the conditions when people lived in Russell City, but also by what happened to Russell City. Just a few notes on what to consider as you think about this. So general basic income and guaranteed basic income, the way those are defined really can vary depending on industry. For the purposes of this proposal, we are looking for how you all want to specify that, what you all intend and what you mean by that. In some industries, when we refer to basic income, there may be a income threshold where people of a certain income level are eligible for receiving basic income. And other examples, that work status and economic status do not matter. So it really is up to this group to have a conversation around what you feel should be prioritized and how that should be described, even if it is we want to change the name of what we're proposing. So that's the first one, and I'm going to keep going, but feel free to put any questions in the chat about that. So the second one is dealing with fair compensation. So again, on the left, you'll see the language from the 26 recommendations, basically summarizing. This was a two-part recommendation, so it's an example of one that we want to separate out. And we'll have a separate conversation around the recommendations for property restoration. But in this context, fair compensation talks about for owners who were not able to reclaim their land due to a series of different issues, looking at what is a fair market rate value as of last year and compensating at that rate. And then also there are notes around what property restoration could look like. I would say also in the conversations with committee members, several things came up, including thinking about what does fair compensation mean for homeowners, for business owners, and also for tenants, whether that be some of the things on the right or something else. So just for example, other themes that we've heard so far. Again, there's feedback to repair the financial damage of a lack of infrastructure investment, a lack of support while people were living in Russell City, and also long-term effects of imminent domain or a land grab. There also was recommendations from our steering committee to retroactively pay relocation fees for all displaced former residents. Other recommendations included funding support for former business owners and their descendants to compensate for lost business earnings, future earnings, and impacts on generational wealth. And then again, repairing the harm resulting from imminent domain. So you can see several different ideas, a lot of them tied to having conversations around what does fair compensation mean for those who own land, for those who own businesses, and/or for those who live there. So that can be further specified in this conversation. Okay, so we're going to pause here before we go into the next section. I think there's some questions. Let's see. So I think Albert, I think you have your hand raised. We are going to open up the public comment a little bit later in the conversation. And then I see there's questions from other attendees around funding. So this conversation is actually not one around funding or funding sources. This is a conversation around really hearing community voice to understand what, in particular, former residents and descendants feel can repair the harm of imminent domain and a loss of land in the forced removal of that community. Because it is a public meeting, we're also accepting feedback from others. So I will just say for questions, if you do not hear your question answered, don't worry. You can continue to follow this process online. And for those with comments, you can feel free to add that when we get to public comment. Okay. Albert has no sound in his session. Okay, so we'll work on sound. I think for those who don't have sound, we will try to troubleshoot. It may be an issue of selecting your language channel under interpretation. Okay, great. So we'll get some of our team on that. Okay, so I'm going to continue just for time, so we have as much time as possible for your input. And team, let me know if I need to speed anything along. So the first section that we're going to talk about again is really starting with the who. So this is a conversation around two proposals. I just want to remind you all for the polls, we'll have two different sections for you to submit your input on general basic income and for you to submit your input on fair compensation. When we get to public comment, after a short break, you can speak on either one. So we'll just ask that in public comment, you When we get to public comment after a short break, you can speak on either one. So we'll just ask that in public comment, you um clarify which recommendation you're speaking to. So as you think about who's eligible, um these are some questions to consider. You don't have to answer all these questions. Um we'll first actually ask you a very short question and then give you a chance to give a more expanded um answer. So first, thinking about, you know, is this action or project or service something that anyone could qualify for? For example, if there was a mural put up um in somewhere in Hayward, that may not require a qualification um or eligible uh eligibility criteria. Um so what exactly is being um thinking about what's being proposed? Is it something that needs to be limited? Where um a select group or people can qualify? Um the second thing to consider is it for one group or multiple groups. Um is it something where you think um there is a series of different people who can be eligible? Or is it more of a cascade where you have a primary group and if they're not available or living, it goes to a secondary group and another group? Um is it either or depending on a different circumstances? These are all things that we really need your feedback on. Um and then also, um if there are multiple groups, you want to understand who are the main groups that are being prioritized for the recommendation. So these questions will continue to come up for both proposals. Just something for you to think about as we go into the discussion. So what we'll do now is we'll pause for a second to do um first a short poll. Um and then we'll do a longer one. Um we'll ask you a series of questions. So first, we'll ask you in two words or less. Who should be eligible for general basic income? And if you have recommendations for a second one, we'll ask you that as well. Then um we will ask you the same question but for fair compensation. So uh again, in two words or less, share who should be eligible for fair compensation. And then if you have a secondary group, um you can um add those there. Please note, we will have another poll with a lot more detail. So this is really just to get a sense of what we'll put in our ranking poll, which will be shared at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to stop sharing screen for a moment so you all can see the poll on your device, and we will launch our first poll. So again, for this poll, you're looking at um two questions. So first, I'm just thinking about general basic income. And if you can please slide down to make sure you answer questions three and four, those will be for fair compensation. We'll give you about um, let's give about five minutes for folks to think about it, process it, and then to put their answers in the chat. We have about thirteen responses of the um sixty-six attendees. So we'll give it a few more minutes for folks to be thinking about um for both fair compensation and general basic income, who should be eligible. You're just joining or still working on the poll. We do have a poll on the screen now. Again, it's an initial um um outline of who we think should be eligible for both general basic income and fair compensation. So we'll take about one and a half more minutes for folks to fill this out. Um and um feel free to let us know in the chat if you need more time. I think there's a question in the chat about why only two words. Um so this initial poll is just to get the uh description of the group so that we can get a um a a overall count. We have about seventy-five people participating in the meeting today. So we want to do a quick skim first before we have a more expanded poll. So uh Rebecca, you will have time to um fill that out in more detail for both general basic income and fair compensation. So we have about forty of the sixty-six people have participated. Um let's do about, I see a few more answers are coming in. Um so while you all are waiting for the forty-one of you who are completed, um who have completed your uh survey answers, the next question will give you an opportunity to expand expand more. So if you want to give more um justification for why you think a certain group or want to give more details for how you think um we might consider eligibility or verify eligibility, that will be your opportunity before we open up to public comment. So feel free to be thinking about that while you wait. Thank you. And if um you are having any issues entering your information directly into the poll, please feel free to send a note to the panelist, and we will support you in uh flagging that for our post-meeting analysis. Okay, so we have about, let's see, it looks like hmm sixty-four percent of attendees um participated. So we have forty-three out of sixty-seven. I'll give about thirty more seconds before we close this poll. Um if you're not able to weigh in, we will have a second question where you can continue to give input. Um again, this will help us to get a uh initial brainstorm of what you're thinking. And later on in the meeting, we'll reflect back some of the groups that we're hearing. Um and that will be used for a ranking poll that will be taken at the very end of the meeting. It looks like the answers have stopped coming in. So well, in this poll, um these are text polls, so they're not going to be ones that we share back in real time. We will um share some of the themes after we go through, um because people wrote in the responses. We want to have a chance to group them. Um for example, some people said elders and the elderly. It gives us a chance to make that one um option for the ranking poll. So thank you for participating in that. Um we're now going to transition to um a more expanded opportunity to weigh in. I will share my s- my sh- screen is there we go, share my screen for you. Can I double check? Um Tim, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to have more of an open conversation um or open opportunity to write your feedback before we open it up for public comment. This will give us a chance to see people's uh written feedback if they don't want to speak um in public comment. So we'll ask you to share your thoughts about who should be eligible and how the city can verify eligibility. So you don't have to answer all these questions. It's really whatever you think. But if you want to expand more on the one or two word comments, there's here's your opportunity. So you may ask yourself if uh again, if this is something that's open to all or if it's a specific group um in an attempt to repair a specific harm. Um should there be multiple groups? And if there's a main group, sharing your thoughts. Um so we'll ask that you do again two responses because there will be um both um a a box for general basic income and a box for fair compensation. So if you give us just a second, we'll launch the next poll and feel free to take a few minutes. Um I will just also flag by flag you all uh by saying that we'll take about five minutes for the poll and then a five minute break. Um so I'll put the break sign up when we're in that five minute period. If you want to take more time for the poll, we will leave it open so you have ample time to write your answers. Um but if you finish early and just want to take a five minute break and come back, feel free to do so. Okay, and with that, the poll is open, so feel free to take your time and write your feedback. Thank you. I have about nine of the sixty-eight participants, or sorry, nine of the um yes, seventy participants have completed the survey so far. So we'll keep this open for a few minutes. Feel free to take your time and again, tell us your thoughts about uh what you feel we should know and consider and um uh be including in the proposal around eligibility. Okay, so we have about twenty-five responses so far and about seventy-seven people on the line. So we'll continue to keep this poll open as we go into a five minute break. For those of you who are um done with the poll, feel free to take a quick break before we reconvene. Um if you need more time, feel free to continue to take that time. We'll leave the poll open until we um come back for a public comment. We currently have about fifty-four percent of the folks in the meeting have responded. We'll give you about two more minutes, maybe uh three more minutes, sorry, to um add your response, and then we'll close out this poll. So if you are working on your response and you need more time, please feel free to send us a note in the chat. Otherwise, um we'll take about two to three more minutes before wrapping up the um written thoughts. Thank you. So if you can take about one more minute to write your responses. Again, if you did not um get a chance to finish your initial brainstorm, that's fine. We will have opportunities with public comment following the meeting. You can also continue to share um in the chat. So give us just a a few more minutes and we will open it up for discussion. And while the last responses are coming in, there was a question in the uh chat that I want to raise um that came to the panelists around the use of the poll results. So all the feedback today will be used to inform the priorities. Um it will not be um polls alone. It'll also be things like what people say in conversation, what people um put into uh the public comment survey as well. So the poll that we will um use to help show priority will be at the very end. That will be one to rank um eligible groups. So for uh most of the conversation, we'll start by getting your feedback and at the end we'll rank some of it. That'll give us a little bit of an indicator of where priorities are for who would be eligible. Um that will not be the last opportunity, though. We will also ask this question um in the public comment period. So all the feedback will be considered, compiled, and analyzed before we identify teams. Okay, we have about sixty-three percent of people. Um so let's go ahead and close out the poll just for time. And hopefully you all got to get a break in there. And thank you so much for taking time. We understand that that is um sometimes difficult to do and can um require a lot of thought and work around some difficult topics. So we appreciate the input. And we also appreciate your patience um by having the um opportunity for folks to reflect silently. Our hope is that we'll hear more voices um because everyone may not be comfortable for public comment. Okay, so we're going to transition now to public comment. Again, as a reminder, today's town hall is specifically focusing on general basic income and fair compensation. So there are many different topics, and throughout the series of five town halls, we will hear um uh appr- here from community members on um all those topics. So the opportunity will be um presented again to hear uh share your feedback. Um so as we go into public comment now, we're going to take about half an hour to talk specifically about the who. We'll circle back to the what and the how. Um but again, from your understanding of what you feel general basic income is for guaranteed basic income or something of that spirit, who should we be talking about with this? So I'm going to um turn it over to my colleague, Michael, who will support um the facilitation of public comment. He'll give some instructions on how to raise your hand and zoom and also how to raise your hand over the phone. Okay, thank you, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. So if you'd like to make a public comment, uh there should be a raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or somewhere on your screen, uh depending on what device you're using. Um if you have dialed in by phone, you can press star nine. Again, that is star nine to raise your hand if you have dialed in. Again, so uh just if you're using the Zoom app or the Zoom platform online, you should see a raise hand button. And then we can go, we'll be going in the order. Um and this is just again, like Josephine said, uh for public comment and feedback. If you again are not comfortable with speaking um out loud, you can leave it in the chat. Um you can also email the Russell City email. Um I'm going to put that in the chat again. Just if you have um more feedback to provide uh to team. So one moment while I see people raising their hands. Great, thank you. And then I'm going to enter this into the chat or the email, uh just so everyone has it handy.
Sorry, Mi- Michael, I can interrupt. For those, I see we have some hands um raised that are not identified. We will ask that you identify yourself with first and last name before you begin speaking, if you're not um listed there. So thank you for that. And I'll also have the timer on the screen, so you'll see um the timer running out as um your time is ending.
Okay, uh starting with uh the first speaker we're going to have is uh Tiago Varlack, and then after that will be Joe Smith. So one moment while um Tiago I'm gonna allow you to speak. If you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Taiga Noel Varlack, and I am honored to stand before you today in strong support of implementing a general basic income policy, a measure that I believe is crucial for advancing economic stability, equality, and opportunity for all Americans. I present this testimony not only as an attorney and business owner in the city of Hayward, but also as a passionate advocate for social justice and economic reform. General basic income is transformative policy that provides all individuals with a regular unconditional sum of money from the government regardless of employment status or other conditions. This approach offers numerous benefits that address some of the most pressing challenges facing our societies today. I am a long-term Hayward resident. I have lived in Hayward since two thousand and seven. I have been a homeowner in Hayward since twenty twenty-three. And I have seen our city change. There is more and more homeless. There is more people who need our help. There are more people who have mental illness that I see outside, and the city um has not been the same since COVID. So I believe that giving a universal basic income to our residents regardless of race and regardless of where they're from will help us improve the city of Hayward and become a better community for all, not just people who own a home and not just for professionals. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so much. Uh next speaker is going to be Joe Smith. Uh go ahead and hit the unmute button.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Um could you uh speak up? You're a bit soft right now.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, much better. Thank you so much.
Okay, um again, thank you very much for letting me speak, and I'm wondering if this webinar um is actually meant to change the way things are being done, or are they going to do this compensation no matter what people say in this webinar? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh the next speaker is going to uh it's labeled as H C C. Again, the next speaker speaker is H C C.
I can hear me okay?
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much.
Hi, yeah, good evening. I'm TJ, and on behalf of a subset of my organization, Hayward Concerned Citizens, some of whom are on the call. Uh we do not support the proposal of any direct money compensation. Social injustice has had a very long lifespan in our history. It's an equal opportunity occurrence. We've all been at the hands of an injustice at some point in our lives, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, age, economic class, educational level, physical functioning, intellectual development, et cetera. There's not enough money in the world that can change or completely heal what happened in the past. We can't go back. But we can collectively focus on doing better in the present. Our city has other debts, obligations, promises, and goals with our Hayward residents' taxpayer money. How about our unhoused population? Do they get their fair portion? Or single parents, or struggling renters, or the mental health challenge on our streets in need of permanent assistance? What about all the community agencies who do great work to help these populations but barely have the funding to stay afloat because the CSC cannot financially award grants to every agency that is so deserving? We need to make things right and equitable for our entire diverse city of Hayward population here in the present. I thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh the next speaker is going to be uh Deborah Harris. Um and after that, um the next speaker says Samsung S M. Um so I'm going to go ahead, uh Deborah. I'm gonna allow you to speak. If you could please unmute yourself.
Okay. I am uh, I have a question as to whether or not there is a budget that has been formulated at this point for this GBI. for this GBI and, uh, if, uh, and the duration of this. And also if there is a lump sum, if a lump sum is possible for the, uh, for the GBI. I have some other things, but I'll just leave it there. So if you, if I can get an answer to those, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina and Josephine, did you want to answer it now or are we just collecting the comments at this time?
Regina, if you don't mind chiming in briefly, but generally just for, for reference for community members, we are reserving this time for comments, so we're not necessarily answering questions. It's more to get as much feedback as possible. But I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Regina Youngblood.
Yes, a budget for any of these recommendations has not been set aside at present. What we are tasked to do in this particular forum is to try to hear from you what form the recommendation should take. Once we understand what recommendations will go forward based on your input in terms of who is eligible, who should be eligible, the length of time, all the questions that Josephine is getting answers to from you today, we should be able to reasonably cost out something for council to react to. And once council approves a recommendation, either in the form that it comes forward or in some modified form based on their feedback, they will then identify for us or help us to identify potential funding for those recommendations that are approved. But at present, there's no money completely set aside for any of the recommendations because we don't yet know exactly what form the recommendation is taking. And so that is the, the point of these town halls, as Josephine said, is to figure out what you want to ask council for. And that's pretty much it right now. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Again, I'm just going to go over a quick rule. So if you need to, or if you'd like to make a public comment, the raise hand button should be somewhere on your screen depending on your device. And if you're using the Zoom webinar or Zoom app. Again, the raise hand function is a hand that looks, this looks like a hand icon and it should be at some part of your screen. If you see three dots, you might have to click that button to raise your hand. And then if you have dialed in, you need to click star nine to raise your hand. Okay, continuing with public comment. The next speaker is, the name listed here on Zoom is Samsung SM F seven one one U one. Go ahead and please unmute yourself.
Yes, my name is Angelique Johnson and I'm calling in from Hayward. I've lived here for fifty-three years and I've seen nothing but negativity coming out of all of this. The problem that I'm having is can we at least start where they originally started from back when this reparation thing came up? Let's talk about the people that were actually here existing. I'm a third generation in on six generations and only four people in my family out of six generations own homes. There is something absolutely wrong. It's hard to get a job out here. It's hard to raise our families now. And I feel like there should be a compensation. I just lost my grandmother two years ago of old age. And yet, and she was a prominent black woman here. She was one of the first black families here in the late forties. I think there needs to be a lot more input about the people that were existing here prior and bring those folds in and then compensate everybody that comes along with that, knowing that the elderly are dying. So how would you compensate somebody in on something when either A, they didn't know or they haven't heard about this? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker on the list is Karen Moore, followed by Marion Johnson. So I'm going to, Karen, I'm going to allow you to go if you could please unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I, uh, my family came during the gold rush, some of them. My other family came way before that. And so I appreciated someone saying, yeah, we've all dealt with racism. But we saw something else happening and we're acknowledging it. And that's that certain people made decisions of where roads and where development went and where pollution development went. And it affected people that really didn't have the money to fight it. And so I'm glad we heard from somebody who lived there because generational wealth and generational trauma occurs in my family too because of some things that happened to the Irish when they got here for the gold rush. And so I understand generational trauma, but I wanted to share with you. I had a friend who shared with me, she got reparations for her family in Alameda ending up in the interning camps during the war where they interned the Japanese. And her family was lucky that, that, that there was someone in the community that kept their business going in their home. So when they were let go, they still had their wealth. That wasn't the case of a lot of people. And so they got reparations just the same as everyone else. And her brother said something that I'd like everyone to hear. He, he shared it with her. He said, I know you weren't there. You were born after we came back, but your life and you as a human being has been changed as a result of what happened to us. And I thought about, you know, I saw her when we do projects, she'd get this intense anxiety. And so I'd like people to understand that, yes, we don't have a lot of money and yes, there's a lot of things coming on, but that small reparation was so healing. And then her sharing her brother's comment of how even though she wasn't in there, that he was giving her money because her life was changed. And it made me understand what happens. And I'm glad somebody spoke about generation after generation after generation because it, it, it doesn't go away. We're still in my family, three generations later, struggling with mental health. And where does this come from? And now we're starting to realize what happened in our family doesn't go away. And we're learning that more and more. And so an apology and what, however, we decide, what we decide and what we can afford will do healing, but more importantly, acknowledging what we did so that we can make sure history has a record of it and we possibly, hopefully won't repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person to speak, let's see, one moment, is going to be Arthur Long Jr. If you could please unmute yourself and the person after this will be Regina. So go ahead, Arthur.
Thank you. I, I'm a former resident of Russell City and we, we're here tonight to talk about the atrocities that happened to us. And I feel it's very unfortunate that this meeting has been hijacked by people who have their own agenda that has, that, that are trying to make light of what happened to us. We, we, we haven't invited you here. I don't know how you got here, but I think it's very unfortunate that this meeting has been opened up to people who have, who were mistreated, who, who, who were taken advantage of, who were robbed. And you come in and you offer your opinion when it's not wanted. So I just wanted to air that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then just a friendly reminder, we have about fifteen minutes left in the public comment. And again, the focus, as again, all feedback is welcome, but we do want to focus on this section at least. Public comment is for who is eligible for this. We'll also have a second public comment later in the evening. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute. Virginia R. Jesus, if you could please unmute.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I am a Hayward resident as well and I would like to voice my strong opposition to this project. I do not believe that the city of Hayward should be engaging resources and staff, uh, time and money on this endeavor. This may be an appropriate project for the private sector through foundations and what have you, but as a use of city resources, this seems highly inappropriate. Uh, and, and I do want to express my view that I'm opposed to this. I'm a city taxpayer. I'm a resident. I'm a homeowner here in Hayward. My view counts. My view is valid. This is not an effort to hijack this meeting. This is the purpose of this meeting. And I would like to make clear that not everyone supports this. And I hope that the staff managing this process will consider that because it does not seem that you are considering that. You seem to have an agenda, which is to propose this project rather than consider all the viewpoints, including opposition. Thank you.
Michael, can I chime in for a quick second? Thank you all for all the public comments. Like Michael mentioned, we have a few more minutes and want to make sure we get through all the hands. There are several raised. I just want to reiterate something that Regina shared. So the purpose of this meeting is to finalize input for proposals to council. And again, this project is in response to city council direction. So this is something that we have been directed to do. And also we want to make sure that the time is respected for this, the space that you get for. So again, our hope for this next thirteen minutes is to kind of get feedback for eligibility. So if your feedback is none, that's fine. You can say none. If you are someone who would like to give more specific input on who you recommend, please be sure to do that during this time period before we close out this section of the conversation. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Michael for public comment. I think Regina came off mute. I don't know if I want to chime in, Regina?
I, I was going to say what you said so well. There are no agendas here other than to follow the direction given by city council who asked us to gather this information. These recommendations have already been proposed to council. Council has received them and they've asked us to provide them with additional details. The space for opposition, we, we value that input. And there are established mechanisms through public comment periods and written comments to value all input. But at this particular time, the purpose of this meeting is to gather specifics about what the recommendations would look like in more detail. And there is no attempt or desire to stifle public comment and opposition. It's just not for this meeting. But we do thank all individuals who have chosen to speak. Your input is well taken and valid. This meeting is tape recorded and it will be summarized for council for consideration along with the information that they've asked us to bring back to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if you'd like to speak, if you click the raise hand button, if you have dialed in, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Continuing with public comment. We're going to go to Marion Johnson. I'm going to unmute, if you could please unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. My name is Marion. My name is Marion Johnson. I'm a former resident. My parents were residents, my grandparents were residents and my great grandparents were residents of Russell City. And my recommendation for eligibility is those in that stat, residents, descendants, homeowners, business owners should be eligible for the funding. Also, when you speak about Hayward and the money that they don't have, they're still collecting taxes on the land they stole from us. So those taxes that, on the land that they're getting, it should be made accessible to the families that the land was stolen from, for the city of Hayward residents. They're still collecting taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next name on the Zoom list is iPad Claire Dugan. I'm going to go ahead and unmute, if you could unmute, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Claire Dugan. I've lived in Hayward and paid taxes for forty-plus years. I want to speak to the issue of the fair compensation in regard to when people were eminent domain out of their homes, whether it was in Russell City or later on. But if I, I'm opposed to any direct financial readjustment for the compensation for people who were removed from their homes due to eminent domain. But if, so I say either no one gets that or everyone who is eminent domain out of their home would get the same thing. And that would include all the people put out of their homes in the nineteen forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, possibly in the eighties when they expanded the Hayward Airport, built Sunset High, did Foothill Freeway, the BART rideaways, the Alameda Creek Flood Control. Eminent domain didn't come from the city of Hayward. It came from, you know, bigger government agencies. I don't think the current Hayward taxpayers should be giving direct financial compensation to the people in, um, from, who lived in Russell City. But if they do, then all those other people, hundreds at least, need to also be compensated in this, with the same kind of ratio that anybody in Russell City is. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, um, Stephanie, I'm going to, since I see your hand raised, I know you've had some technical difficulty. I'm going to have you go next. Can you please unmute yourself? Go ahead.
So it works?
Uh, yes, you're just going to have to speak up just a bit.
Okay. So this eminent domain, just to clarify, I, I'm in Russell City, took place in the sixties? Hello?
Hi, yes, we're not answering questions for public comment. That we're speaking about when the final action is taking in the sixties.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, my feelings on this compensation for properties that had been removed using the eminent domain, I believe just to select one group of people to receive the compensation may not be the way to go because that's leaving what all the other people that have to go through eminent domain and lost property. What about those people? Are they going to be, I know you're not answering a question. I don't expect you to answer my question. I'm just stating a question. What about those people that are not in this select group? Will they also be compensated somewhere down the road? And that's another comment that an individual made that the, the city resources may not be a good place to go and use city recesses to work this particular plan. Perhaps the businesses who, um, I think resulted in, um, in the, um, the properties of Russell City to be taken were probably at the suggestion, possibly I may be wrong, of the business community. They wanted this area to, to be, you know, to, to allow for their businesses to protect, to, excuse me, profit. Anyway, um, so my concern is what about the other people who have had properties removed? For example, my parents had property removed. Do you think I can apply to get a compensation? I'm still alive. Um, anyway, so that, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is going to be Connie Tollfree. Go ahead and unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, but could you speak up?
I said, can you hear me?
Perfect. Yes, now we can. Thank you.
I can't understand how this became from Russell City to a Hayward thing. It don't make no sense to me and I can understand the first ladies saying that this should be for the homeless and this should be for that. What about our families that was homeless and had their places taken? It makes no sense to me. This is about Russell City and what happened to the people.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, uh, the next person is gonna be Hannah Green. If you could please, uh, unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm with Where Is My Land?, um, a black land reclamation organization, and I just really want to make it clear for two folks that Russell City was displaced because they were black. This was an instance of very specific racially motivated eminent domain. Um, and so when you talk about widening, widening it to other victims of eminent domain, um, the what aboutisms don't really serve here. Um, this is about Russell City. Russell City, they were displaced and dispossessed because they were black. Um, and so I implore you all to familiarize yourselves with the history. Um, and then also with some of the stats, you know, we heard earlier that, um, everybody has experienced harm in some way. But what is the scale of that harm? In California alone, the racial wealth gap between black people and white people is two hundred and forty-eight years. It would take black people at the current rate, two hundred and forty-eight years to accumulate the wealth that their white neighbors have. Um, and so how do we close that in the present? Russell City descendants, they deserve to have liquid assets, um, to shape the lives that they want. Because their agency was so violently taken from them in the nineteen sixties. Um, and so, yeah, again, implore everybody to stop centering individual stories and look at the trends. I know personal harms have happened, but again, consider the scale of the harm. Um, between nineteen forty-nine and nineteen seventy-three, over two thousand five hundred projects of eminent domain were carried out. One million people were displaced, two thirds of them were black. Um, and so, yeah, I think people have to replace feelings with facts, um, especially in cases like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Katie, next speaker is going to be, um, Ed Von Pryor, um, and in parentheses, it says Anthony family, but if you could unmute, go ahead.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, uh, in terms of the general, uh, basic income, uh, I, I would, uh, like to, uh, state that I think that the, uh, seniors and elders should be prioritized. Cause, um, I, for instance, I have my two oldest family members, my mother will be eighty-four years, uh, of age next month. And I have a grand aunt, which is, would be her aunt, and she will be, uh, ninety-six in December. And, you know, uh, they were actually, uh, residents of Russell City, and my, actually, my grand aunt was actually a landowner. And, uh, my second comment in terms of general basic income would be, uh, I don't know if there would be any tax, um, tax implications for the general basic income and/or would it impact those who may be on like social, so- so- social security or SSI or any other uh, fixed income, uh, as it relates to government, uh, assistance. And, uh, in terms of the, um, people that are in opposition to, um, the folks of, uh, of the community of Russell City. When you look at the history of America, eminent domain has been the main vehicle that has robbed people of African descent, black people of our generational wealth. It's happened at the federal level, it's happened at the state level, it's happened at the county and the city level. And for those who may not understand or may not agree or may not be in support of this, I understand that, however, when generational wealth is stolen, then that disrupts generations of, 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 um, family members who could benefit from what the land and what the property of value will, uh, eventually, um, mature to. And, and they could make, um, certain, um, decisions in their life that would be beneficial for all of their family members. So it's hard for me to understand how there are so many people that are in strong opposition. And the ones who want to say, you know, what about the homeless and what about this group and that group? There's resources out there for those groups and there's, um, agencies out there to help those groups. So I don't understand how a conversation about the harm that's been done to the Russell City community turns into a discussion of what should we do for all people, you know, that have been, um, affected or what, all people that are in, uh, unfortunate circumstances in their lives today. My grandfather was Chauncey Dubuque Prior. He was a, uh, committee member and he fought to preserve the community of Russell City. He tried to bring the resources and the infrastructure to the community and tried to save the people, uh, from having to give up their land and and, 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 uh, forced removal. However, he realized that, you know, it was already a predetermined plan by the governmental agencies. And a year after my family was, my, my paternal family was forced out of Russell City, my grandmother passed away. So I'm not saying that they killed her, but I'm saying that the impact of what was done affected her health. And, um, that's all I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have, um, just for the sake of time, we have, uh, four speakers left, and these are going to be the last four for this round. Um, so we're a bit, um, running out, but, um, we will have a second, uh, public comment, uh, later this evening. So go ahead, um, I'm gonna go with, um, the next that says iPhone and ending with the numbers three, three, six, three, if you could please unmute.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Raymond Lopez, and for me, listening to all these other people that do not have a clue what took place in Russell City. I grew up and raised in Russell City from nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty-three. And there are people being taken from their homes, the property was taken from their home. They didn't have no place to go. And in the night, they would come in and burn the buildings down. Then it got to where the National Guard was coming in. These people have to understand, Russell City was a very beautiful place to live. Everybody got along. It may have to do with blacks, whites, Mexicans, or Hispanics. Everyone got along, and for them, they had that taken from them and not realize, hey, you know, nobody ever came by and said, what was going on? And for people to, yeah, I know we have a problem with homeless people. We have all kinds of things going on, but the focus is Russell City. A lot of generations been there, a lot of families lost their homes that were taken from them. Thank you for my time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, the next, uh, speaker is gonna be, uh, Kavon Ward. Uh, go ahead and unmute, please.
Hi, my name is Kavon Ward, and I'm the founder of Justice for Bruce's Beach and Where Is My Land? Um, I am here on behalf of the Russell City Descendants for Restored Justice Group. And, uh, Marion Johnson is one of those people who spoke today, and I just want to say I second everything she said. I'm also want to give a shout out to my colleague Hannah Green. She took all the words out of my mouth. And the one other thing I want to touch on is someone mentioned, why does the city have to pay? Why is the city responsible? But the city caused the harm. So the city needs to repair the harm. That is why. And I also want to say, please do your research. Half of you don't know what you're talking about, and you're allowing your white privilege and your white fragility to get in the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, let me go to, sorry, Zoom is changing on me. Okay, the next, uh, comment is, um, Marion Johnson. If you could please unmute.
There I go. Oh, thank you so much. Uh, again, I just wanted to speak to one thing. When we talk about, um, eminent domain, um, eminent domain is used by the government to, to purchase privately owned land to make it available for public use. So things like a freeway, the bar station, uh, a park, uh, a, a pathway that the whole air, no one owns it privately, is what eminent domain was, should be used for. That was not the case with Russell City. They took the land and then they sold the land to private investors. The whole of Russell City at this point is held privately, when it was already held privately by private homeowners. So the eminent domain was used to steal the land and to give the land to other private owners. So do the research. Those of you who had land taken by eminent domain, and it's a freeway now, that's public use. It's a pu- it's a library, that's public use. It's the bar station, that's public use. Our land was stolen and given to other private investors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just for the sake of time, Marley Ramirez, uh, you're gonna be the last speaker for this. Um, we're gonna keep track of those who have their hand raised, um, and you will be first the next time for the next public section. Thank you, everyone. Uh, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I am, I am muted. I just want to say that I do know about the Russell City situation. And, uh, since living in Hayward for twenty-five years, I do believe there needs to be some type of just cause compensation for the land taken away. Um, I'm, I'm not in line with the basic income, uh, proposition. I just, I did look up on KQED how many residents were in Russell City. And, uh, I don't know if that includes their descendants, and that was fourteen hundred. It also included Latinos. I know that there was Asians, that it was, uh, a mixture of people, and, um, I do need, believe there needs to be some just cause reparation for the stolen land, but basic income is, I don't agree with that. That's all.
Thank you. So again, um, if you have your hand currently raised, uh, you'll be first in line for our next public comment, um, because we are a bit over. And please, um, feel free to share your comments in the chat, um, as again, we are collecting all the data and comments and feedback as well. Uh, Josephine?
Thank you so much, Michael, and thank you all for your comments. I just, uh, briefly want to give a quick reminder about our community agreement. So again, for the space, we do want to keep the space respectful and rooted in the intention of the meeting. Um, you're welcome to share your feedback. We want to make sure we're, um, not having any kind of hate speech or disrespect in the conversation. And also being open to, um, being made aware of maybe new concepts or ideas that folks are not familiar with. Um, I wanted to briefly share some of the feedback from the earlier eligibility poll. Um, we'll briefly share this, so this is really just to validate that we have your answers for those who did the, um, very first poll to say what are the possible groups. This information will be used to create a ranking survey that will take the last ten minutes or five minutes of the meeting. So very briefly, um, feel free to take a look. This just shows the counts and the responses. Um, let me just make sure, can people see, uh, the Excel sheet on my screen, staff team? Okay, I see a thumbs up. Thank you, Lisa. So this over here, this column is gonna be how we describe it in the actual poll, this column.
It's, it's a little small, I think. I don't know if you can make it a little bit bigger for folks.
Thank you so much, Regina, for that reminder. So we'll have this on a poll where it's, uh, directly in front of you on your device. But the far left is going to be how we group the feedback that we've received. Um, the middle column, that's labeled column B. That is how we heard the feedback from you all. So if you can take a look, um, check out what you see, and then the far right has a count of how many people said it. Uh, this will not be to rank, this is just to get the right answers, um, for the, um, options of the, the polling survey. So if you can look on the far left for general basic income, we have former residents, descendants, homeowners, none, everyone affected, second generation residents only, all blacks, black indigenous and people of color living in Hayward, Latino, Native American, business, um, possibly business owners, residents of Russell City for greater than five years, living descendants, seniors and renters. So if there's any other recommendation that you feel was not reflected, that should be included in the ranking survey, please put it in the chat to the panelists and the host, and you can just note, um, that is for a general basic income or GBI recommendation. So the second screen summarizes what we heard when it comes to fair compensation. I'll get all on the screen in one second. So I'll read through them, but again, this first column is showing, um, what we grouped after seeing what was in the second column, which is what you all said. So we have descendants, former residents, none, all, those damaged descendants of property owners, owners, people from nineteen forty to twenty twenty-four, Asian American, young black indigenous and people of colors, college students and renters. Um, so a range of different responses for fair compensation. Again, the proposals that we had, um, prior to this from the community input spoke to fair compensation for lost, uh, land, lost homes, lost businesses and lost property. Um, so when we get to the ranking poll at the end, we'll be asking you to vote, uh, with that in mind. Um, so if there's anything that you feel is missing as a potential option or something that was misinterpreted, please feel free to let us know in the chat. Okay, so we did give a little bit of extra time because there was, um, a good amount of conversation in that last segment on eligibility. So we're going to skip the next break and go right into the, um, next discussion section. So now we're transitioning into talking about actually describing the what, the why, the how of both recommendations. So again, just to take us back, I'm gonna scroll to a few other slides, um, to get to what we're trying to end with. It, this feedback will be used to create this description. So we just went over the last section here, which is the who. Um, where we, um, ask for feedback. You're welcome to continue to share that in the chat. Now we'll go into the what and the how. Um, so the feedback from this section is what is happening, what's being recommended. Think about things like, is it a one-time thing? Is it over, um, a longer period of time? If so, for how long? If you have thoughts about the how and the why and want to speak to the justification, feel free to do that. But this next segment, which will spend about an hour on, so this will be the majority of our conversation, is your thoughts on how you feel the city of Hayward should be describing this for the proposal. Again, we'll have a proposal for every topic, so when you give your comments, you can speak about, um, feedback on how we should describe their compensation. You can also give feedback to describe, um, general basic income. Um, and like Regina shared, it's okay if there's not consensus. Um, and even if there's opposition, we welcome that for the time and for what we're trying to, uh, filter into, um, the proposal. We are asking that you, um, clarify if possible which portion of the proposal you'd like to share input on. Um, and if it's just opposition in general, you can say that and we'll keep going. Okay, so again, some questions to consider. We'll have about, um, forty-five minutes or to an hour, depending on the feedback. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Michael, but just want to again reiterate, please, um, keep in mind our community agreements with your comments. Um, and please try to center on the final product so that we can best reflect your feedback to city council. Um, and now, um, we will, um, I'll leave this up for one more minute. But again, um, I want to just kind of reiterate, with some of the origin, much of the conversation is about repairing harm, um, both to former residents and their descendants. Um, and that's why we're framing this in a harm reduction framework. So with these questions in mind, we're going to, um, start by having, um, sorry, before we go to public comment, we're gonna do two quick polls. We will have a little bit less time to make sure there's more time for the discussion. So what I'll ask is, um, right now, we'll launch a poll. You'll have two open-ended questions, where first you can silently reflect and share your thoughts on how, uh, general basic income should be described. So what is it? Who is it for? If you have ideas about, um, any specific details, feel free to share that. And then we'll also, um, add for the second question, so please be, uh, sure to scroll down to fair compensation on that second question, uh, the same, um, feedback request on how we should describe their compensation. Um, so it's about seven fourteen now. It took about ten minutes or twelve minutes last time. Let's do six minutes. We'll come back at seven twenty, um, and close the poll out, and then we'll start to give, uh, feedbacks, uh, orally. So I will let you all know before the poll closes, so you can finish up your last thoughts and submit something in writing. And then you can continue to write your thoughts in the chat or share during public comment. So we will see you back at, um, seven twenty, and Michael will be supporting us with public comment. Thank you. So we have about nine out of, um, six or seventy participants responding. Now ten people have responded. We'll give you about three to four more minutes, and we'll try to keep the poll open as long as possible, and then we'll go into discussion. Thank you. We'll take a few more, um, minutes. Um, you'll notice that the questions look similar because, uh, they're asking about two different proposals. So the first question is asking for input on general basic income. And then number two is gonna be a question on fair compensation. Um, so for all the town halls, we'll be discussing two proposals. So we ask for your feedback on. So we ask for your feedback on both. And if you want to skip any of the two, you can just press none or no feedback. If you have any issues with the poll, please feel free to email us. We'll send the project email in the chat. It will be russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. And so Michael just added it to the chat. If you did not get to submit your answers for one of the two responses, we can see that on the backend. So please feel free to write your response and send it via email to the address in the chat. So again, that's russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. So we have about sixty or fifty-eight percent of our participants responding. We'll give it one more minute because there seems to be a lot of discussion. Again, we are going to go into public comment. We ask that you speak for no more than two minutes. If we see that we have a lot of comments, we may have to shorten the time slightly. And this section will be on input on what, the how, the why. So if you have thoughts about how general basic income should be described or how fair compensation should be described, please feel free to share that when you make your public comment. So attendees, if you could please take about thirty more seconds to finish up your responses, we will be closing the poll before going back to public comment. And if you would like to begin to raise your hand for a public comment, you're welcome to do so in just a minute. Okay. So I'm going to end the poll. We had about sixty-three percent participation. And I think the last responses have trickled in. So thank you so much for your written feedback. And again, we will have a public comment survey for each of the proposals that will be posted in about one week. So if you did not get a chance to, over these last eight minutes, give your response, you will have time to do so after the meeting. Okay, so with that said, we are currently at about seven twenty-two. We're going to go until roughly, let's see, I think our time is eight o'clock for discussion. Yeah, about, let's say, well, we plan to go until about ten minutes to eight. We'll go until eight o'clock since we took a little bit longer with eligibility. So I'm going to turn it back over to Michael. And again, our focus for this input is for descriptions or objectives or goals of the two proposals. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, great. Again, on your device, if you're using the Zoom app or the Zoom web platform, you want to click Raise Hand. It's a button with a hand symbol on it. If you have dialed in using your cellular device or phone or landbite, you want to dial star nine to raise hand. And I don't see the people that had their hand raised for the previous section that we said we would go first. So again, if you could please click the Raise Hand button on your device so that you can participate in public comment. Again, if you are not comfortable with public speaking, please feel free to provide feedback in the chat directly. Or you can also provide feedback to the email that's also in the chat. So we're going to go ahead with our first speaker. It's going to be Pega Barlac. Go ahead and please unmute.
Good evening. Again, I just want to say for those who misconstrue what I was saying, I am definitely advocating for Russell City residents and their descendants to, of course, be compensated before anyone else. However, I believe implementing general basic income and addressing historical injustices like those experienced by the Russell City residents can have a significant positive impact on Hayward overall. We have many benefits to giving general basic income to those who the council deems to be awarded this. First of all, it will increase consumer spending. When they have a regular guaranteed income, residents of this city will have more disposable income to spend on local goods and services. And we will no longer have to see businesses bordered up on B Street. My business is on B Street. And it's technically heartbreaking to drive down and see businesses closing day after day. So when we give general basic income, we can ensure that our businesses stay open. It will also give us support for small businesses. Local entrepreneurs and small businesses will benefit from a more robust customer base and we can keep our dollars in Hayward. We will reduce poverty and inequality. By alleviating poverty, GBI will provide a financial safety net that ensures that we can count on money to be paid to our residents who qualify and it's something that they know is coming. It will also narrow the income gap as someone else commented, it'll take over two hundred years for black people to catch up with other groups who have had a running start at economic prosperity in this country. And by allowing for general basic income for those who qualify, that gap can be narrowed. It will also enhance our well-being. It will help the health of people who may not be able to afford for healthcare. It can help them buy groceries. It can help them be better at living their day-to-day life. And it also can help education. I'm one of those people who believe that even if you're not from Russell City, we have to invest in our children. And if they are affected by GBI, they will be able to further education and give back to the community. So overall, I think that we can address the goals in a way that makes sense for everybody. And I am totally for GBI. And I think that this should happen in Hayward. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. The next speaker is going to be Stephanie. But before I unmute you, Stephanie, again, if you would like to make a public comment for this section, we are discussing fair compensation and the general basic income. And the question is, how would you describe the action, project and or service being proposed? Okay, go ahead. Stephanie, if you could please unmute yourself.
Okay. Am I? Okay, you can hear?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, I checked off if this particular project passes and the city council agrees to have this passed. I believe it should be a one-time payment. We don't want to have another welfare system set up in addition to the one that already exists in California. So I totally disagree. I think one-time payment is the best way to do it if we have to do that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next public speaker is going to be Arthur Long Jr. Go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. I think the only fair compensation would be land restoration, which would probably entail having Alameda County come in to the picture. And I'd just like to say for everyone who feels that it has treated Hayward or have agenda, not, agenda is not even a good word. Have a gripe with Hayward as far as compensation is concerned. Please feel free to start a general committees. This committee was started for Russell City because of the atrocities that were perpetrated to Russell City. If you have a right to the city, please start your own committee. Feel free. I'm sure they will be more than willing to listen. But this is for Russell City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any more raised hands. Again, if you would like to make a public comment for this section, please go ahead and click the Raise Hand button on your Zoom app or platform if you're using it online or on the toolbar. If you don't see it, you may have to click the More button, which looks like three dots, and then you might see it there. Again, if you have dialed in, you want to dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, I see some more comments. Thank you. And then we shall continue. One moment. Great. Thank you so much, everyone, for providing public feedback. The first person to speak is going to be Milana Davis. And then after that will be Amy. So go ahead, Milana, if you could please unmute.
Hello, thank you. My name is Milana Davis. I am the advocacy and policy lead for Where Is My Land? I am also part of the white family who was currently trying to receive repair for what was done to my uncle, Silas White, regarding the Ebony Beach Club in Santa Monica. I would just like to say that it should be understood that wealth is different from income pay. I was in a meeting this morning and there's a book called Fifteen Cents on the Dollar by Ebony Reed and Louise Story. And they go over these things. So just one-time payments is in no way equivalent to what was lost by these families who had their homes and their land stolen from them. So for all those who are saying it should just be a one-time thing, I don't know what the answer is. But I can tell you that wealth is not the same as a payment or income. Wealth is determined by assets minus liabilities, how much you are able to grow, how much you are able to continue minus your debt. So please, let's keep that in mind when we're talking about the things that were lost by the people of Russell City and their descendants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go with Amy. And the next person after that is going to be Esben Prior. Go ahead, Amy, if you could please unmute.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Amy Pete. And I am a forty-five-year-old white female resident of Hayward. And I am extremely supportive of all reparations plans. I get very excited when these emails come into my inbox. Because when I learned of the history of Russell City, which echoes the story of so many black families who've been displaced through, you know, racist policies. I get so excited when I think that there might be a way to fix something. And so I would be supportive of an ongoing basic income plan. I would be supportive of, you know, property restoration. I had the wonderful opportunity to attend like a Russell City evening where they mix the jazz with storytelling. And that was a great event. I would love to see more events like that. I am involved with the Star King Unitarian Universalist Church here in Hayward. And I know as a congregation, we would be honored to provide any solidarity that might be beneficial going forward. We are with the Russell City reparations planning. So thank you so much.
I was muted. Sorry, everyone. Thank you, Amy. The next is going to be Esben Prior. And then following that will be Joe Smith. Esben, if you could please unmute yourself.
Yes, I would like to, as far as my family is concerned, we would like to receive fair compensation for the land that was taken and stolen from us at today's market rate, as well as to receive compensation for relocation fees that were not paid out with compounded interest from the year of removal all the way up into the present, as well as to look at the the property taxes that the city has been collecting on the land of the present-day private owners of that land. Because that has been revenue that's been generated for the city of Hayward. So basically, the city of Hayward has been making money off my family land as well as other land that was taken from the other families and former residents of Russell City. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is going to be Joe Smith and then Donna Whitmore. Joe, if you could unmute. Go ahead. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'd like to comment on this whole particular action that's being proposed. And I don't think that the action proposed is justified. And I also want to say that the proposals that need to be happening for this action to take place, what exact actions need to be taken? Things that happen in the past are in the past. And I agree with the other speaker that spoke and said that actions in the past are in the past and we have to look forward to the future. And it has nothing to do with actions that happened in the past, whether they have been bad or good or whatever. They happened. And we don't have to compensate for things that happened in the past. Thank you.
The next speaker is going to be Donna. Go ahead and please unmute.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to bring up that if you really go back and look at the history of Russell City, it's always been very diverse. It was started in the eighteen hundreds and it had Spanish folks, Danes, Germans, Portuguese, Mexicans, Filipinos. And actually, the black families were the most recent that came in the forties and had the shortest period of time in Russell City. And I think what people have to understand when you're judging history from our lens today, that this was an income-based issue. These were all people of limited means, which is why they came to Russell City because the land was cheap. And it, it, it had that aura of people sticking together. But on the other hand, there were no services. There was no sewer. There was no running water. There was a lot of disease. And when you keep looking at wanting to compensate just for one set of folks, my family happens to be Portuguese. I was born in Hayward, have lived seventy-one years in Hayward. I remember Russell City. And it was very diverse. We used to visit our relatives down on their little chicken ranches. But I just would like people to realize that this is a lens that doesn't really exist. And we have to go back to Alameda County owned it. Alameda County did the relocation. Most of the folks, the two hundred families that lived there were renters. And we're relocated, something that never been done in any of these other eminent domain goings-on that's happened in Hayward and happened in Alameda County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is going to be Marion Johnson, followed by Samsung SMF seven-one-one, which I believe is Angela Johnson. So go ahead, Marion, if you could please unmute.
Thank you again, Michael. I appreciate it. So many different conversations. And eminent domain was used to take land. My family on both sides owned land. And I agree with the previous speaker that it was a multicultural community and the African-Americans basically moved, started moving in in the forties. And that's when Russell City became a target. That's when the counties and the government agencies started denying services as soon as black people started moving in. So yeah, there, it was a diverse community and everyone became a target because of African-Americans. So with that being said, and being a landowner and understanding that the city of Hayward is on welfare with our land by collecting taxes from nineteen sixty to now from the private companies they sold our land to, Hayward must be on welfare. So it should be ongoing since the taxes are still ongoing for all of the residents that live, and I say all, I didn't say just black. I said all of the residents that lived in Russell City and were displaced. And there was no relocation project. They didn't refer my family. In fact, they told my family, because we're black, that we couldn't live in Hayward. We ended up in East Oakland. That's the only place they allowed us to live. And they did not find a space for our family. We had to find it for ourselves. So there was no relocation. So let's clear that up. Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just chime in very briefly, Michael? And thank you so much for all the comments, everyone. I do really appreciate you all sharing as we're hearing with, you know, our stories with the narratives. Thank you. Can I just chime in very briefly, Michael? And thank you so much for all the comments, everyone. Um, I do really appreciate you all sharing, um, as we're hearing with, you know, our stories, with the narratives. Um, there is a lot of, um, harm. That has been done to the Russell City community and we're really trying to make sure we have a clear understanding of what. This, you know, current collection of the members of the public, Russell City descendants, former residents and other people in Hayward, um, think should be included in these proposals. I do wanna just, um, do a quick time check to say we have about twenty, maybe twenty-five more minutes for input, um. You are welcome to continue to share your feedback. We do want your feedback. So I really encourage you to think about what you wanna see written down. In the proposal, so whether it's how it's being described, um, what is being prioritized. Or how you wanna see, um, it rolled out, that's really helpful. So we just ask that you continue to use the time to share what you want to see. In the conversation. And I'll turn it right back to Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next person to speak, uh, it looks like for Zoom is gonna be Virginia, followed by, uh, Zenobia. Uh, so the first one is Virginia. If you could go ahead and please unmute.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would like to, uh, respond to the, um, request, which is. How should these proposals be presented to the city council? Uh, my view is that we need to leave open the possibility of a proposal that calls for no reparations. After review. Um, um, a reasonable decision and recommendation could be that. We don't believe this should be supported. We don't believe that the city of Hayward should be, uh, funding and using city staff. And other resources on this project. Um, and if, if, uh, if, you know, if we're looking for a response to the city council, I think that needs to be considered. And be a possible response, uh, for the proposals that you submit. Uh, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna put, uh, so Samsung SMF. Seven-one-one, uh, you, um, I believe there might have been a glitch in Zoom, so I'm gonna, uh, go ahead and allow you to speak. I believe this is, um. Angela?
Angelique, yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I wanna respond on the fact that somebody is saying that we can't go backwards. We shouldn't have never got to this point to begin with. It shouldn't have not ever been some format to where more privilege were better off. I remember when nobody wanted to be in Hayward. I remember when it was a certain type of class of people that were just here. We couldn't move to Fremont. They moved us out of San Francisco. My grandmother used to have to get on the, on the ferry to go over there to Benicia. To go work on the thing for the, for the war. I'm confused at when a lot of the black families that ran from the South to get away from. Lynching and slavery to come to, um, California. Assuming that we were gonna have some form of entitlement, if you would wanna call it that. And however, like somebody stated, Hayward is like a welfare city. Because at the end of the day, when they stole everything, they never gave nothing back. And it's not acceptable to be okay about. Not looking at the families, like I say, for generations. That's coming afterward and they're still being done the same way. Nothing's changed about Hayward. All I'm hearing is a bunch of excuses from special interest people. With their privileged selves that probably never lived in the lower bottom part of Hayward. They live up at the hills. They had no problem about taking the hills. But then when they wanted the property back as prime real estate, they start moving us out. Becoming more and more homeless people, like people say. Drug addiction. These are things that have been happening since the sixties. That's not gonna change. But what we can do is start giving the proper information to the people that need to be. Informed about these type of situations. So that it don't go back to that situation no more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is going to be, uh, Zenobia. Uh, go ahead and unmute, please.
Hi, uh, yes, Zenobia Millsboro. Uh, I just. I don't know, I'm, I'm very conflicted because I see the people who are saying that Russell City don't, doesn't deserve. To be compensated. Um, and that we, the reason that the blacks or even Hispanics moved there is because. Hayward would not allow them to move anyplace else. My parents, um, had bought their house in nineteen forty-two and worked enslaved. And paid for it by nineteen forty-four. Uh, it wasn't a shack. It was, they had bought one of the houses that was left there by the previous. Generation, uh, previous people. But the main thing is that I think. We'd want to be recognized as people who had things. But were not allowed to keep them. And, um, I get, I get a little bit disturbed about people who want to. Paint Russell City. I know it was poor. I know that the four main streets were paved, but the, the side streets had mud, um. Streets, when it rained, when it didn't rain, we didn't have it. But it was home. And more than took the property, they took our home. They took our dreams. And so, um. I don't know how to get that over to people who didn't have their dreams stolen or who were able to rely on. The privilege. And that's all I wanna say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next, uh, speaker, the name on the Zoom, it says the Thomas Family. Um, go ahead and unmute, please.
Yes, hello, um. Just for the record, my family lived at two forty-seven Jefferson. Street. My grandfather bought that house for approximately two thousand dollars, paid it off. He was a very working, uh, very hard-working man. My grandfather, they took the house probably like in Jan- it was January, like sixty-three. My grandfather died. He never. He never made it back to his family. It, it tore him apart. He had been in that house for over twenty-something years. So the people that are on the call and, and are opposed to any reparation. To the descendants, like my mother, she lived there. My auntie, she's ninety, she will be ninety years old. I rebuke that in the name of Jesus. Also, I want to say. God is in control of this whole situation, whether you guys believe in Him or not. And from the sounds of it, part of the men, women, is, is really ratchet. It's really cold-blooded. We're still living this, just listening to the conversation today. We've come so far. I already know the judge is gonna grant all of this in the name of Jesus. There's no way that Hayward would have even put the propose, will put a letter in the, um. Papers apologizing if they didn't have intentions on moving forward with this. So, um, I believe it was Marion said. All of the money that's been paid, like the taxes and stuff like that over the years, oh, the families are do that. Justice is going to be served. Nothing else to say.
Thank you.
And if I could just chime in really briefly, thank you all so much. I wanna just, uh, kinda re-center us, cuz I know there have been a lot of sentiments coming up. Um, a lot of different feedback and opinions. We are really trying to prioritize, um, your time and input. Um, and focus that time and input on what we need to write the proposal. So just to clarify, this is not. A town hall to change a city council, uh, direction or decision from this year or past years. Uh, this is not an attempt to convince staff that we're not gonna do rest, uh, reparative justice work because we are. Um, this is a space to finalize, um, community-led proposals with, um, integrity. And, and I know there may be some who are newer to this conversation. So at the end of the meeting, we will share future topics, but there are several different topics being proposed. These are just the first two. So, uh, we really wanna make sure that fair compensation and general basic income gives us due time and attention. For your input because they were amongst some of the highest, uh, priorities of the community feedback to date. So I just wanna flag that. I know many things are being said. There might be misinformation or, um, different opinions that you feel inclined to correct. But please note that your two minutes is your time to spend how you like. So I'm just putting on this, uh, screen again, cuz I think someone asked for the questions. Some ideas to consider as we go into our last, uh, ten to fifteen minutes of public comment. So I'll ask that, um, if you have spoken several times or if you're saying the same thing, to try to practice that step-up, step-back from our community agreements. So that others can be heard in our, uh, remaining time for the evening. So again, thinking about if you were to be describing this, um, given that city staff will be trying to. Compile, analyze and synthesize all the feedback on behalf of several different community members. What would you recommend? So whether it's specific texts you would say or different elements you wanna see. How should the action or the process, the project or the program, the service be described, however you see it? Um, and then with that in mind, here's some other probing questions. So again, if you have thoughts about. How it's justified, why it's justified, what steps you wanna see happen, how you would describe it, that is what we're trying to, um, hold space for. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Michael, but just wanted to refocus our time because I know a lot of different. Um, threads of conversation are coming up and it is very, um, natural to have responses and thoughts for that. Um, for the sake of today, though, I do wanna encourage you all to focus on our goal, which is, uh, getting feedback to develop proposals so that city. Council can make a determination on all the recommendations voiced by the community. So I'll turn it back over to public comment. Um, if it's helpful, we can try to put some of these probing questions in the chat. Thank you, Michael.
Hey, again, um, if you would like to make a public comment, um, please use the raise hand button on your Zoom, um. App or if you're using it on the Zoom web, uh, website platform. Uh, it's a little hand and it says raise hand. If you don't see it, uh, you wanna click the more button, which, uh, usually has three dots. And you might see it there depending on what device you're using. If you have dialed in by phone, um, you wanna click star, or sorry, you wanna dial star nine to raise your hand. And again, if you're not, uh, comfortable with, uh, public comment at this time, you can leave, uh, comments and feedback in the chat. Um, and, uh, staff will see that as well. I'm just gonna paste in the email once again, um, so that everyone can see it. So that, um, you can provide feedback directly to that email if you maybe have a lengthier response. Okay, I don't see, um, any raised hands. Oh, okay. I believe this is, uh, Angelique. One moment. Uh, go ahead and please unmute.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, back to what Josephine said, back to the basic. I think that there should be a fair income for the people, the descendants. And I also think that there should be, uh. One-time payment for the people that lost their homes. But on top of that, I think also. They should collect royalty off of everything that's been going on. Has anybody brought that question up? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I don't see any other raised hands. Um, again, just for instruction, um, in case anybody's having any technical difficulties. Uh, the raised hand button should be on your Zoom toolbar, uh, depending on, uh, the device that you're using. Okay, I see another one. Donna Whitmore, go ahead and unmute, please.
Hi. Uh, I'm concerned, this is tonight with the two subject matter. It says public comment. And I was under the assumption that it would be folks that weren't on the Russell City group. I mean, it seemed pretty obvious what. They've worked on for the last year with council money, by the way, uh, Hayward money. But this, but it, it seems like one-sided. And the council is not gonna get a full view. If it really isn't put out to all the residents and taxpayers of Hayward. Rather than the same folks on the Russell City group saying the same things. They're the ones that put up the two ideas. So shouldn't the other folks have a chance at this? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, okay, uh, okay, so Zoom, apologies, it seems like Zoom is changing the line of people for comment. Let me. Let's double-check it. One moment. Okay, um, Ika Varlek, go ahead and unmute, please.
Hello, so I wanna say I didn't answer the question earlier how I needed to. I think that the, um, general basic income is a yes. I think it should be periodic. I think that it should. I think that we need to spend the money to figure out the extent of the harm. That's what I put into the chat. Uh, we need to figure out if someone says, what was the land worth back in the sixties? Uh, what was it undervalued for and, and paid if at all? Um, what could the family have expected to gain if they were able to stay in Hayward and prosper? And we need to put that into real dollars for today's times and figure out how to pay it over time so the city can actually do it. And it doesn't need to be a lump sum, but I think it's something that needs to be periodic and it needs to have an end date. But I think it needs to. We need to put some thought into what that number actually looks like because it was real when those people lost their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next, uh, public speaker is gonna be, uh, Esben Prior. Uh, go ahead and unmute.
Uh, yes, from my understanding, this is a meeting pertaining to the Russell City Reparative Justice Project. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is why I'm here is because of that. And if there's any other individuals or groups who feel that they've been treated unfairly. Aggressively or, uh, whatnot by the city of Hayward or any other governmental agency. I will support you a hundred percent and wholeheartedly in your efforts to, uh, make yourself whole and have your, um. Uh, uh, um, uh, um, what, have whatever you've been affected by addressed. But to me, I think that is inappropriately, inappropriate as well as, um. Unhelpful for people to try to come into this group meeting to try to spin it into something else. Outside of what it's supposed to be. Now, if I'm in the wrong meeting, can someone please correct me? Because I thought that I was. Given, um, a, a, a invite to participate. In a meeting or public comments on the Russell City Reparative Justice Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next speaker again is gonna be, uh, Marion Johnson. Uh, go ahead and please unmute.
Thank you so, so much, Michael, again. And thank you Es- thank you Esben for your last comment because. That is my impression as well, is that we are here to decide how to restore, repair and repay. The debt to those families in Russell City that were affected by the use of eminent domain to toss. Those families on the streets. And what I'm hearing is exactly what took place back in the sixties. Uh, people who didn't live in our community, making decisions or trying to make decisions about what should happen with us. I'm sure you have a lane and a plate to eat off. We're trying to restore, repair these families. That have lost generational wealth, that have lost land, have lost places to stay. We were effectively made. Homeless and ha- unhoused by the actions of certain citizens of Hayward, Alameda County. It was the whole Alameda County that did this as well. Every city outside of our city had a voice in what was done to us. And now you're again centering yourself in what we need to heal and to be made whole. So thank you, Esbon. Uh, I'm hoping that this is where we're at.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe this is gonna be our last comment because we are now at eight o'clock or seven fifty-eight. Um, this will be the last comment for a minute. So, um, Michael Johnson, uh, number two, uh, go ahead and unmute, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, my, um, thing in reference to what I've been listening to, like the lady just si- said, this is a. Reparation, I mean, it's sort of justice for Russell City. If you're not interested in that, you don't feel it should be, it should happen, then this is the wrong, uh. It's the wrong meeting for you. You should not be here on this call at all because this is to move forward on reparations for. Russell City. So if you do not believe this should have reparations or anything like that, I don't think you should be on this meeting. You should not even be here, from what I can tell. This has, this has one focus, period. And if you don't agree with that, then this is not the meeting for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see we have a few more hands raised. If we can come back to the hands, we will do that at the close of the meeting. We do want to make sure we can have time for a couple of staff comments. At first, I just want to thank you, Michael, for coordinating public comment and thank you, everyone, for sharing. I know it's not an easy thing to speak up. I do want to see if our assistant city manager first wants to chime in on some of the public comment and I can feel free to chime in on that as well as a few of the Q and A questions that came during the last segment. Regina, did you want to speak to any of the feedback?
I just wanted to clarify that the list of invitees initially started as just the group of folks who signed up to be made aware of the project. And that is a list of nearly 400 individuals. That does include the 15 members of the steering committee, but goes very far beyond that. We also sent out this communication and invitation to be a part of this town hall to the 65,000 subscribers of the stack newsletter that the city puts out periodically. And so that is said to indicate that we do want the broadest amount of input and engagement in this process. All views are welcome. All comments are welcome. But the purpose of these meetings is to flesh out what the recommendations will look like to council. And there again, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, there are mechanisms that are clearly established, which many of the indicators and would indicates, excuse me, past engagement would indicate that a lot of our residents know how to engage with those mechanisms or those pathways to voice either support or opposition for any agenda item or recommendations that are being brought before council. And so to use our time as wisely as possible, as Josephine said, we want to focus on the areas recommendation areas and answering the thoughtful questions that have been put out there to help us to shape final recommendations or proposals that go to council. And as Josephine said, you know, public comment is welcome here and each person has the two minutes that they have to make a comment. And so it's your choice how to use it. Your choice how to use it, but but I would certainly recommend focusing on answering those questions so that we can get your views and your thoughts in front of council.
Thank you so much, Regina. And I would just like to add, again, thanks to y'all for being here, for sharing your input. As I mentioned earlier, this space in the town hall series is to collect input, not necessarily to answer questions. We will have meetings with city council where the public is welcome to kind of hear more council questions and how they're considering their decisions. But I did want to just respond to a couple of things that came up. So I think there was some maybe confusion about sort of who's been heard, who's not been heard. There has been, yes, almost two years of engagement, a lot of work primarily led by Regina with some support from consultants and a lot of leadership from our community, elected community-led steering committee. And I want to really thank those who did work to try to get some concepts around what we're trying to do, trying to formalize a process where we can start to have pathways for communication. So there has been a series of different meetings, many of which are public and were public and are online. So we have shared our project website on, in the chat that can be shared in the post-meeting communication as well. So if you are interested, if you did not receive that notice or are curious, feel free to sign up and have more information. I think several folks here have been receiving it for a while. That said, this is a racial equity project because it started with racism, like systemically, right? We we're not going to have a lesson on redlining in this space. There are a lot of great recordings. Specifically, I want to say July and June of 2023. Maybe 22, might have been 23, but there's information online if you want to kind of increase knowledge around redlining, the impact of local governments, and specifically how that targeted black, Latinx and other communities who are positioned nearby them. So that that's just there. And one of the concepts with racial equity specifically is really trying to understand who has been harmed, who's at the margin, who is not often in the center for the conversation. So that is why in this process, there definitely, because of direction of council and because of the commitment to being intentional with this work, there has been a commitment to center those who actually lived in Russell City. In addition to those descendants impacted by the eminent domain decisions of the city and other entities. So I say that because it's important to clarify that we're not biased in any way or trying to promote any agenda. We're trying to be intentional, the same way if we have a neighborhood where a pothole was in a, you know, specific neighborhood. The people in that area who are impacted would be priority stakeholders for input to understand its impacts. This is something that happened to people specifically because of policies that you see, you know, reflected in West Oakland and San Francisco and many places. So I would encourage you all, there are a lot of great books on redlining. If you're curious about the history, there are maps that can show how primarily black neighborhoods were targeted. And as you saw in the beginning, Russell City, this project is about repairing harm regardless of race. So many folks will tell you all throughout the conversations, we've talked about the fact that black, Latino, Asian, Pacific Islander, white people, all of them, Russell City, including when there was a forced displacement through eminent domain. And that said, the proximity in particular to black communities and the way in which anti-blackness played out through eminent domain across the entire country absolutely affected people of all races. So I just want to see in that context to say that, yes, we are holding open meetings for this town hall series because we're having public input. You're welcome to share your feedback. There has been conversation and there have been some ways in which we tried to prioritize the voice of those who've experienced the most harm, but you're welcome to share your thoughts. And that said, I will say, especially for former residents on the call and for those who have had to kind of relive family trauma, we really appreciate you and everyone for coming and showing up and showing interest. I know that this is very difficult and I think that the, even in talking about it, there's a different impact because if it wasn't your house, your home, your community, your family, your experience, it may resonate differently to say that was in the past. So I don't want anyone from any of the comments to feel dismiss, but I do want to call out that there are specific programmatic and process steps for this engagement process. And that said, I will share some feedback on the next couple of meetings so you all can continue to stay engaged and share your input. Oh, and sorry, one more thing. There are several comments in the chat. We weren't able to answer all that. I saw some themes around redlining. Maybe some concern around the, the way conversations are being spun or turned. Again, just want to reiterate, our goal right now as city staff is to develop proposals for city council with community input. So we welcome you to continue to do that. There will be, let me just make sure. Can you all see my screen right now? Okay, perfect. So for this first set of two proposals, we'll need about a week to sort through the feedback that we heard today. If you have additional feedback, you can email us at russellcity-rjp@hayward. Sorry, hayward-ca.gov. So any questions you have, if a poll closed early and you have additional thoughts, we're going to be asking that you give us those in the next two days so we can analyze all the feedback heard to date. From there, we'll be drafting some of the sections of the proposal that we mentioned. And with that draft, it'll be posted online for public comment. So you can review what we have and see if you have other thoughts or recommendations for edits. You can also continue to add more comments that will be analyzed. So this is not your last opportunity to give feedback on these proposals. That said, we will be having our next town hall, sorry. Next week, same place, same time, same Zoom links. I believe we'll keep them the same and also five thirty to eight thirty. So we do apologize for the late night hour. But for that conversation, we will be focusing on property restoration and affordable housing development. So those are the next two topics. Some of those came up. So for example, we'll go through all the recommendations heard to date and you'll see how some of the themes around affordable housing and homelessness can intersect with things like affordable housing broadly. And then I think property restoration came up in the conversation. So that meeting next week will be the space to give feedback. We'll have the same type of format. We may play around with the order of questions. But for those who are interested, I encourage you to think about, again, what, you know, is your feedback for who should be eligible and how it should be defined for city council to consider. And this is just a preview to show that we'll be having the town hall series through September. So after next week, we'll take a break and resume on August 21st. And on August 21st and August 28th, we will have two evening town halls. And then our final town hall will be on August 25th. So if you registered with your email, you will receive this information. If you'd like to be added to the program list, you can do so. We are going to, we want to make sure before we wrap up, there is some time to rank the eligibility input. So in looking at the feedback from earlier, as you saw, we asked two questions around, you know, the two-word question. Who should be eligible for general basic income? Who should be eligible for fair compensation? I previewed some of those different feedback options. So we are now going to do a ranking poll. This is not going to be the final opportunity to say who should be priority groups for these proposed recommendations. But it is to give a sense of what the priority is of the group remaining, which is about six, 56 participant, sorry, 56 participants tonight. I think at our peak, we had about 77. So there will be more opportunities online to get input as we get to public comment. And with that, I would like to launch a poll. So we'll have a two-part poll. The first part will ask about who you think should be eligible for general basic income. And then the second one will ask about who you think should be eligible for fair compensation. So please just take note, there actually are three questions for each. So the first will be select a primary group that should be eligible for the proposed benefit. The second will be, are there additional groups that you recommend be eligible? You can say yes or no. And if yes, you can add up to three additional groups of the pre-selected option. So we'll give you a few minutes to do that poll before we close out. And we will watch the poll now. Thank you.
Just to clarify, there will be two polls, the general basic income than the fair compensation.
Oh, thank you, Tim, for the clarification. So we'll start with the general basic income poll. That one is live now. So please be sure to answer all three questions. And we'll give you a few minutes before we close this and open the next one. So far, we have about 10 respondents of the 54 participants remaining. So we'll give you some time so that we have clarity on who you all want to be prioritized. And then following the poll, we'll share back what we heard. So we're just about 67%. I'm going to give folks a few more minutes to share their feedback. Again, this first question is on who you think should be eligible for general basic income. The second question is if you believe there are more groups, more than one group. And if so, you can select up to three responses for secondary groups. So we'll take about maybe two more minutes for anyone having tech challenges. We're at 76%. And we'd love to see as much of the full group participate as possible. We're just at about 80%. I'm going to give it 30 more seconds to see if any last answers are trickling in. And then we'll end this poll and share results before doing the second one, which will be on input for fair compensation. Okay, I think we got one or two last ones coming in. So thank you all for participating in that. We will close that poll and then share. Sorry, Tim, can we share results now or should we just wait until the next poll?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, great. So I'm going to just share results so people can see the responses. So for the first question around who should be eligible for general basic income, there's a mix of responses. About 10 respondents, 27% said former residents. Two responses for descendants, about 5%. Five responses for homeowners, about 14%. Seven responses for none. Seven responses for everyone affected and then two responses for all. One response for black indigenous and people of color living in Hayward. And then you'll see one response for a series of other groups, so residents who lived in Russell City for more than five years, living descendants, as well as seniors. So thank you for your participation in that. Now we're going to go into the next survey, which will ask you the same questions, but for fair compensation. So we'll give you about five minutes to fill out that survey next. So again, the same three questions. Who's a primary group that should benefit from the, or should be eligible parting from the proposed benefit? Are there additional groups that you would recommend adding? And if yes, you can select up to three of those additional groups. And we'll, I know I didn't share the yes and other groups for this, the last question. We wanted to save on time. But we will be summarizing all this feedback for qualitative data analysis and posting that online before the final proposals go to council. So feel free to take a few minutes to fill this out for fair compensation and then we'll share the results hopefully for all three. We just crossed 56% of participants. We'll give it a couple more minutes. We have 26, now 27 of the current participants engaging. So we'll give you a few more minutes before we share the results. We're just at about 77% of our participations. We'll give it a few more minutes. Again, the first question is going to be who should be eligible primarily? The second question is, yes or no, do you agree that there should be more groups that are eligible? And then the third question is going to be, and again, thinking about fair compensation. What are the additional groups, if any? Waiting for the last responses. If you want to respond, please try to do so in the next one minute so we can end the poll and share the results before we close out. Okay, so if you are finishing up the poll, please feel free to take about 10 more seconds to press submit. Before we close the poll, if for some reason you were not able to enter your information, again, we'll have an opportunity during the public comment. You can also email us at russellcity-rjp@hayward-ca.gov. And so it looks like we have the last of the comments. Okay, great. So we're going to go ahead and end the poll. And then you can share, look at some of the feedback. So if you're on your mobile device or your phone, you should be able to scroll through the responses. I won't read through every single one, but you all can just take a moment to see what you said. And this is the second one for fair compensation. So you'll see that for the first group, there was a mix of feedback. It seems like the most prominent group is former residents being called out with 15 of the 34 respondents saying former residents. There's also another person who said owner as a separate 16th person. We also had descendants. So about three people said descendants, six people said none, two people said all. One said those damaged. I would ask just some thought for feedback for future town halls and also public comment. Those damage might be something that's open to interpretation. So if you do have a feedback and as you see, there can be a difference. So, if you do have a feedback, and as you see, there can be a difference on an opinion on what damage and harm has been caused. We do encourage you to put in writing what you think. We can only share what we hear. So, those damaged got one vote, the descendants, property owners and descendants. So, about eight people altogether between descendants and descendants of property owners. So, closer to about 22% of the people who responded from today's call. And then we also had one person say people who lived in Russell, or sorry, people who lived in Russell City or connections to Russell City from 1940 to 2024. When talking about should there be additional groups, so should there be one primary group that's eligible or multiple? About 74% of respondents said yes, and 26 said no. So, no could either be because people think there should be a single choice of who's eligible or because they oppose this particular reparations or recommended benefit for reparative justice. And then for our last question, you'll see a lot more responses. People had the option to select up to three. So, just I'll point out some of the ones with the most votes. So, descendants of property owners and descendants by far had the highest number. Former residents are still listed, those damaged, and renters, as well as people living in Russell City from 1940 to 2024. And a few other options once or twice. So, thank you all so much for sharing that feedback. It's very helpful for us. And I think our goal in doing a poll towards the end of the the meeting was to give you a kind of temperature check of, you know, where people are at with those who are in the room. So, with that, I wanted to acknowledge, we did have a good number of folks drop off from the meeting. So, we do encourage you, if you have friends, family members, colleagues who may want to weigh in, please feel free to encourage them to complete the public comment survey. You can look for that in about a week on the project website. If you have additional feedback, Michael has added the email in the chat. So, feel free to email us if you feel you weren't clear or wanted to add more detail or weren't heard. We do ask, if you can, by this Friday, which is July 26th, towards 6:00 PM, please email all feedback so we have enough time to consider and review it before drafting the proposals that are posted for public comment. With that, I want to make this one minor update to the agenda just because of time. We know it is a later meeting. We do have a raffle. We're going to do that and email participants who won after the town hall meeting. So, thank you so much for that. If you did enter the meeting and did not give a valid email address, please be sure to share that with the panelists in the chat before you leave so that if you are the winner, we can contact you. And we'll be raffling off four prizes to incentivize public participation and input. So, I just want to say thank you again so much. It's really an honor to hold space for you all. I know this is not easy work, and it definitely is not a work that is done yet. So, I do want to, just on behalf of the Racial Equity Division here at City of Hayward, acknowledge that we appreciate all your feedback and your time and your interest. We know that this series of town halls is very robust, and I hope you take this space and time to be heard so that what we propose represents what you want. And with that, I would love to close this out by turning the mic over to, or sorry, before I turn it over to Regina, I just want to say thank you again, Tim, Regina, Michael, Melissa, Luisa. Thank you to the team who helped to coordinate this so we can maximize your input. And then with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Youngblood.
Y con eso, señora Youngblood, gracias y gracias al equipo que ayudó a facilitar esta reunión. Gracias a todos ustedes por aguantar hasta el final de la reunión. Gracias por su tiempo, su atención, su participación, sus comentarios. Espero que tengamos reuniones en el futuro que les interese a usted.
We want to consider all viewpoints. And so, again, thank you for coming. I hope that you found some value in the work that was done this evening. As Josephine said, we understand and agree that it is not easy work, but it is necessary. And we appreciate you for taking the time. For those of you who don't have the time to sit through meetings, it's absolutely possible to watch these meetings as they will be posted on the project website. And even if you don't want to watch the meetings, the summary of input will also be posted on the project website. And there will be comment periods available for each of these town halls following the posting of those summary position papers. So, there's all types of ways for people to engage. You know, we will continue to promote these meetings. They're already promoted on the project website. So, if you want to mark your calendars or tell other people about the topics that are coming up, please do so. And again, just thank you so much for your time, attention, and engagement this evening. Josephine?
Thank you, Regina. And with that, everyone, we're going to, we're going to close the meeting out. So, thank you for attending tonight. And like Regina and I mentioned, next week, July 31st, will be our conversation on property restoration and affordable housing. So, have a great night and be safe. And please check your email to see if you're one of our raffle winners, and we will be in touch.